...to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a green and roses for all.
Trustee Trombley, yeah, trustee Grisenda.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to approve the minutes, January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, ready for board meeting?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, you can clap your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion period. Presentation, petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community?
Not quite sure.
Well, any comments, anything you want to address the board for?
I stopped by.
I'm glad to see you.
I wrote to the board a few weeks ago regarding our water bill.
Did we repeat?
Yes, it is close by. Eleven.
Ah, yes. This is something the board will have to do. Multi-family home property, primary residence, one meter, one meter?
Yes.
One meter that we break up into two units, two services.
Is that a zoning issue, though, that has been changed?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's got property zoning.
Zoning, no.
No? Because two resident, we can change that?
Change.
To single residence?
Well, if you're that, that's, I don't know if that's the question, but it would have to be.
Yeah, he wants a single residence, one meter.
But that's not, that's not really a zoning, that would be a codes issue.
Okay.
Or, you know, someone needs to look at it, it's not really a zoning issue.
Building light. Okay, well, how permanent would that change be? Because in the future, we may operate that property as a multifamily rental property. But for the time being, we're carrying for my mother-in-law. And we're paying a double surcharge on the water bill. I was just wondering if that could be waived temporarily, you know, while our situation is currently the way it is.
We can ask Mike.
Let's have Mike examine this, and then go with the codes.
Okay.
See what the codes tell us.
He's our codes enforcement officer.
And we'll be back here.
Maybe excuse.
Yeah, you never have to ask permission when you come.
I just wanted to follow up on my last.
That's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Good, thank you for coming.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, you have Mike's report.
He called this afternoon, and he had to bring his mother to the doctor, so he didn't know if he would make it or not.
Okay. He's been somewhat busy back there, creating new file system and getting things somewhat back in order. Any questions for Mike? Write it down, ask them. All right. Before I give my report, I'd like to present to you Mike Jollicker, our new superintendent of public works. Who will start? P. King?
Yep.
Next point. Very good. And just in case you want some experience, I'll give you the pager now.
Weekend.
All of them, all right. All right. I'd like to thank the village residents who attended last Wednesday's meeting on the dissolution process given by a representative of the New York State Department of State. The meeting was very informative. The questions asked by residents showed their interest and involvement with this issue, and most left the meeting feeling more informed about the dissolution process. Normally, I would refrain from commenting upon public statements as printed in the local news media. I found a statement on Saturday's, February ninth, Press Republican, to require a response. And I quote, "The village has a handful staff that essentially do nothing. The town picks up everything," end quote. I find this statement to be inflammatory and completely erroneous. I and the board are extremely proud of the job the village staff, from the office staff to the DPW, are doing for the village residents. When you get a glass of water from your faucet or flush your toilets, it is the village staff that maintains the quality of these services, not the town. If a water main breaks, if a water line is frozen, or if sewage backs up in your cellar, who do you call? You call the village, not the town. It is the village who does all the billing for water and wastewater services, not the town, that adds a surcharge and a service fee for all the services in the town. It is the village staff that plows and sands your streets and sidewalks, not the town. We are complimented by many residents on how the village staff professionally handles or handled the last two major snow events, how quickly and efficiently the streets and sidewalks were attended to. When you have a problem, when you have questions, or when you need an explanation for some event, who do you call? At the town, you call the village office for help because you realize that that help will be addressed quickly and efficiently. Village government is government at its simplest and most responsive form to address the many needs of the village residents. From a financial standpoint, the village is in excellent shape. Debts owed for water and wastewater infrastructure are well-controlled and addressed effectively. Our fund balances are healthy. We, as a board, would prefer to have money in savings to address emergency needs rather than having to borrow money to pay unexpected bills. Our water and wastewater rates have remained stable over the past four years because of responsible spending and by acquiring new sources of revenue to help maintain these vital services. Another important point of interest, in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve tax year, the village was in the less than one percent in New York State of taxing entities that were able to lower their property tax rates. I, for one, refuse to simply turn over all the assets the village residents have paid for over the years to an entity that will not provide or maintain services that the village taxpayers deserve and have come to depend upon. Yes, the river will flood downtown when it chooses to. When it chooses to overflow its bank, overflow its banks. The village will respond as it always does, in a caring and professional manner, helping those most affected. The fire department and EMS services, two a member, will agree. Their organizations are financially better off as a taxing district rather than relying on the village budget for funding. These organizations have the best equipment and are recognized as one of the finest emergency responders in the county. This is not a town service. It is a community service. I feel an apology is in order for portraying the village staff as one that is not addressing the many necessary needs of village residents. From an economic standpoint, the staff provides the most cost-effective services for its community, services that the residents depend upon and services they deserve. I encourage all registered voters to exercise their right to vote, March nineteenth, from noon to nine P.M. I hope all residents will think long and hard about their village and what it means to them when they make their choices and mark their ballots or ballot. Thank you for your patience. Trustee Trombley.
First off, I'd like to welcome Mike. Really look forward to working with you, Mike, and welcome to our village staff. I think you'll enjoy working with all of us.
Thank you.
The meeting on last Wednesday was very well-attended. Very, very good questions, as Mayor Martin has said. I think the people that turned out for that meeting are very concerned about what's going to happen to the village and the services, and I think that for some people, some of the information that they learned was not quite what they expected. I think they, they learned a lot of things that they weren't sure about. Also, Mayor Martin, I'd like to thank you for your responses this evening because I, for one, am extremely proud to sit on this village board, and I would hate to see the services, not only for the people that live in the village, but for myself as a village resident, to lose what we have in this village. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Grisenda.
In same regards to trustee Trombley, all of the above, I'd also like to welcome Mr. Jollicker, a superintendent. Thank you for coming aboard. It's a great team to work with, and I hope everything is great for the future. Yeah?
Thank you. Trustee Trombley.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for your comments on your report, Mr. Mayor. I agree completely with whatever you said. I feel the same that you do for the village, and I too was also insulted by the comments made in that Press Republican article as well. So, thank you very, very much. Those are good words. I attended the IDA meeting this, this past month, also this meeting in regards to dissolution of the village, and I believe it was, I agree, it was a, it was a good turnout, and I, I hope that people are communicating with the rest of the residents that were unable to be there and understanding what it's about. And I also want to remind everyone that there's a, a meeting February thirteenth for the Water and Wastewater Project.
Open to the public.
Open to the public, five P.M. at the rec center in Melles Point. Dan, welcome, Mike. Good to see you here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Garrett.
On that shared service meeting, you know, there was a cancellation in the paper, so don't be confused. It is, it is back on, because I didn't see the back on notice, but I saw the cancellation notice. So, be aware of that for Wednesday. Welcome, Mike. It's great to have you onboard. I applied for another grant through Stewart's, their Holiday Matching Grant Fund for the playground, and we will have an answer in March on that. So, I'm still looking for other grants and areas to apply, so if anyone comes across any, let me know, and it's a constant researching for that. But we're moving forward with playground. It will happen, folks. It's just a matter of, of when, and not big, so keep working on it. Thank you.
Have the report from the clerk treasurer, please.
Everyone has their January expenditures and revenue reports.
Budget seems to be doing well.
Yes.
The one on streets, is that for paving? I didn't find that one I circled.
It's in the negative.
No, but it's, it's, it's down to like twenty percent. A fifty-one-ten, the transportation street maintenance.
Yes, that's our paving.
That's paving, that's our paving, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't out, because we do have a ways to go still. Thank you.
Still worry mobile side.
And on that abstract, the spyware for fifty dollars, how many computers that covers? Does it cover all our computers?
It's not. It's, my computer was taken over by spyware, so we had to have Mike come in and fix it.
Oh, okay. So, we have antivirus on everyone's computers?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we do get, who do we use for that? Is it a free one, or are we?
Yes, it's a free one.
And the radios, those, that's being reimbursed, correct? The three sixty fifty?
No, that's, that's our portion.
That's our portion of our radio being remanded. Yeah, okay. Thank you. And the uniforms, four charges, we never took off Larry's charge for uniform, we just kept it going?
No, he's off here.
Because we have four separate uniform charges.
That's weekly, four weeks, four weeks.
Thank you. Just have to refresh me every now and then, it's that old age thing setting in. Okay, that's all my questions. Anyone else?
As long as we're, as long as we're dealing with the warrant. Underwater. When he came up, his certification was running out, he needed some more hours. He was going to take it with a online course. Needed it by thirty-first of January. I know, well, I didn't have the opportunity because it wasn't brought to my attention at the last board meeting. But I'm asking for a motion to approve this expenditure. Keep him certified. I know it's a last-minute thing, these guys ought to be taking better care of.
Three hundred and eighty-five dollars?
Yes. Ought to be taking better care of, looking at when their certificates expire. This is for a Class Two A license, necessary to run the water plant.
Well, he's already been reimbursed for that.
Well, I need a motion to approve those.
Oh, okay.
Now the second?
Second.
Have a rule call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Did we document in his file that in the future, if you were not notified in advance, thank you.
Can I talk about it? Okay. The budget transfers?
Do you want to do that first, or are you going to?
Then we got to approve the other.
Got to approve the warrant. Oh, no, that's not, never. Transfer from A nine zero four, nine zero four zero point eight to A nineteen ten point four, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Transfer from G ninety forty point eight to G nineteen ten point four, five hundred and ten.
These are to cover what?
Insurance cost.
Well, that's in the minutes. I'm not going to, thank you.
That was two, that's not what she saw.
It's on your agenda.
It is, I know. I just said something to them.
Motion for those transfers?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to transfer as, as red, at two hundred and forty-five dollars and five hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Rule call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Purchase request to a pocket colorometer, test chlorine at the, at the water plant.
Question on that.
I have one now, but it doesn't work so well.
Motion first, make a motion to approve that.
Nice second.
Yeah, discussion.
Okay, what, what happened to our current one? Because that's not that old. If you do recall, unless, again, this is time catapulting by, but I do believe that we just purchased one within the past couple of years.
One of these?
Yes. I, I'd be curious as to know when was the last purchase and what kind of warrants used on that thing, because we bought a chlorine analyzer, which was a lot more money than this, which is in the back. Right, that's back there. I'm unsure about this. I, I could swear somewhere in this brain of mine that we also got a tester, but it could be incorrect. I just was curious as to that.
I don't remember.
Is there something ringing in your head?
No, I don't, I don't remember, but when she mentioned that, that we had bought that, that could be what she's thinking of. I don't know.
No, I remember the one back there, and that was very expensive, but I thought there was also a tester, so.
Was, was tableless.
I mean, it's, it's a minor expense, but just was curious as to.
Okay, what, address it.
Can we afford to wait till the next meeting, though? Thanks, we've had some issues.
I think so, we waited this long, I think.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be just curious as to when was the last one. Thank you. And on that, too, it had, both of them were quotes of the exact dollar amount.
On the bucket one?
Both from Pro forma and Hack, or Hatch, I don't know what you, how you pronounce it.
Yes. And they were probably going to, when they came in, I was told when they come in, they're going to have Hatch on it.
Say again?
When they come in, if you purchase it, when they come in, from two different vendors, they'll have Hatch on it. So, the other vendor is buying it from Hatch.
Oh, gotcha. But the Pro forma was going to charge shipping, and I wanted to confirm that. And, and so Hatch is no shipping. Am I reading this correctly?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So, that's why we, we chose Hatch. Okay. All right. So, that was just the other question I had.
Question in both, definitely. Another purchase requisition from water.
Wastewater.
Wastewater, benchtop pH meter.
Seven forty-nine?
Maybe I just put it up.
Will you make copies for us?
Yeah, we got it.
You got it?
Or maybe he surpassed you, made them for you.
I'll put a check mark, just to compile stuff for the agenda.
Oh. Make a motion.
He has a word, yes, okay, go ahead.
To approve the purchase of a benchtop pH meter.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
And this is for his everyday testing that he does?
Yes, this will be permanent at the plant.
Is this a replacement?
No, he has some portable ones that aren't working so well, I guess, with pH.
And we certainly have more than enough to cover the expense.
Yes.
Forty-seven hundred still, seven forty-nine.
You got the other one, KPO benchtop kit, seven ninety-nine.
Plus plus.
Plus plus.
Yeah.
And that's another example.
And why are we switching to this mode? It says permanent.
Yeah, it'll be.
Is there going to be more efficiency to it? What is the benefit of switching?
Probably to be more accurate.
Be more accurate. The ones that he's using, the pH meters he's using are old.
Very old, yeah. Okay, I was just curious. It's such a vital part of the balance.
Yes, it's very important.
Okay.
Are you?
Yeah.
Can you hear the discussion on this? Rule call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. All right, now the work.
We have some additional invoices. So, one thousand two hundred and forty-six sixty-two.
Any discussion on the audit, or on the abstract? Or? Gas seems a little high, but that was two, that was, I believe it was two shipments, right?
Diesel and diesel.
Under gas, Smith and Oil, Smith and Son, six forty-one. That was for two hundred and eighty-nine gallons, right?
Yeah. And part of that, part of that ASN, part of the company.
I thought the party burner was up above there, the two sixty-one, or is it six?
Party burner was lesser with two one nine.
Yeah, two sixty-one.
But the total bill was for two hundred and eighty-nine gallons.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Motion to approve the warrant?
Motion.
With the addition?
With the addition of one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? Sorry, I'm preparing to make the motion first.
No, we did.
I know. Rule call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Where do you want to discuss this?
What is this, the water meter? In business.
Mag meter.
In business.
Oh, you didn't have it on here, so I just wanted to make sure that that's.
I penciled a couple in here, that's right.
No, I just don't want you to miss it, I didn't know if this was the time, or.
No. Have a report from the superintendent?
Good answer.
Correspondents, please.
Correspondent from Tim Pelpe, from Boy Scout troop forty-one, regarding an acknowledgement and achievement for Eagle Scout, Dylan Blatt, and resolution of congratulations from the village. Correspondent from Sunderland and Michael Kearns, regarding upkeep and maintenance of proposed or abandoned properties. Correspondent from Albany County, Kurt Thomas Fingen, regarding preserving the records, management grants. Correspondent from New York State, D.C., regarding annual wastewater treatment plan inspection report. Correspondent from Direct Energy, regarding our electricity supplier. Letter and notice of violation to David Burnier, regarding his property at ninety-three Oak Street. Response from Mayor Martin to letters to the editor of our portal featured in the Press Republican regarding Shion Plain Water. Correspondent from Earth Science Engineering, regarding property at twenty-nine Cedar Street. Correspondent from A.R.C., regarding their payment and move of taxes, and a thank you letter from the village. Letter to Candell Friends, regarding his property located at twenty-nine Cedar Street. Correspondent from Eric Rover, regarding his water and sewer billing for his property at twelve thirty-eight Route Nine. Twelve eighth Raff, is thank you letters to unsuccessful applicants for the superintendent position. Correspondent from New York State, D.C., regarding wastewater treatment plans scoring and descriptive data of municipal wastewater treatment plans in New York.
Any discussion on your correspondence? Mr. Donahue was in last week, week before, from Emergency Services, and they're trying to change the names. We talked about this before, going from church to main lane to. to what's on the other side here?
Water.
Water Street, thank you. They were resolution changing the street names. Must we read this?
Resolution changing street names, whereas Clinton County Emergency Services updates maintains correct street addresses within Clinton County, so that Emergency nine-one-one service can operate efficiently. Whereas Clinton County Emergency Services has requested that the Village of Champlain rename Water Street and the section of Church Street that lies on the north side of Route nine, so that the Emergency nine-one-one service can operate more efficiently if an emergency call is received from someone living on these streets. Whereas Clinton County Emergency Services has requested these streets be renamed to Maiden Lane, since they already connect with Maiden Lane. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees at the regular meeting held on Monday, February eleventh, two thousand thirteen, hereby approves the renaming of Water Street and the section of Church Street that lies on the north side of Route nine to Maiden Lane, to help with the efficiency of the Emergency nine-one-one service.
Have a motion to approve? Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion here? If we talk this out, this is just a bit more formality for.
Do we need to vote or say no, or?
We will. All in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution in support, New York State contact information vacant property. This was correspondence received in number. Number two. From Assemblyman Michael Kearns regarding upkeep and maintenance of foreclosed or abandoned properties. This is a resolution to support. Where villages and town and other governments will be notified as to the contact person, be it a bank, or court, whatever. We had an experience with this property, with the property here in the village about six or eight months ago, and it took me a whole afternoon to go back and forth from Bank of America to, in Washington, to California, back to Oregon, for a property at the end of Oak Street up there. I think this is, I think this is an excellent resolution, so that we are told the contact person and how we can get a hold of them, and, you know, speed up this process when they need to have the logs voted and property examined, taken care of.
Resolution in support of New York State contact information for vacant structures, whereas vacant abandoned proposed homes and structures have proliferated throughout New York State over the last five years, and whereas vacant structures that are not maintained for months at a time degrade and depreciate the value of the vacant structure as well as the value of surrounding properties, and whereas leading. Lending.
Lending institutions.
Lending institutions that hold mortgages on said vacant structures do not always provide the contact information of a responsible party. Whereas Assembly Bill eighty-eight and Assembly Bill eighty-eight twenty-four currently pending would make it mandatory for lending institutions to provide contact information of responsible parties regarding vacant structures and require good faith in obtaining a foreclosure. Whereas the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees supports the passage of said bills. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Champlain hereby supports passage of said bills and respectfully request that the state representatives who represent constituents in the Village of Champlain support the passing of said bills.
Have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Have a second?
Second.
What is actually being added here by Representative Kearns is the require good faith, that require the banks and lending institutions to notify. I'm sure this is, I'm sorry. All in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Florence Kernan as election inspector.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
This will be the third, we anticipate a large turnout for voting. A third inspector will be put on, I mean, we're saving the money, we didn't have the, we didn't have the registration date, voter registration date, we're gonna cancel that. Oh, is that, we gotta read that in the. Okay, I need your copy, might as well. All in favor of appointing, you have a motion?
Yes.
Have a second?
Yes.
All in favor of appointing Florence Kernan as an inspection, inspector, election inspector, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Have a resolution for Dylan Glad. Resolution of congratulations to Dylan Glad, whereas Dylan Glad has given his time and energy to achieving his goal of earning the title of Eagle Scout through Boy Scout troop number forty-one, and whereas Dylan has completed the requirements of having been examined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review, and whereas Dylan was found worthy of Eagle Scout on October eighth, two thousand twelve, and whereas an Eagle Scout Court of Honor is scheduled for Sunday, February seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, at the Knights of Columbus Hall at three Oak Street in Champlain, New York, honoring this achievement. Now, therefore be it resolved, this resolution of congratulations to Dylan Glad is being offered by Mayor Gregory Martin, and seconded by trustees Amy Garrett, Thomas Gisenda, Kim Trobley, and Thomas Trobley, and having been adopted by unanimous, a formative vote by the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees, this resolution is to be spread upon the minutes of the regular board meeting held on the eleventh day of February in the year two thousand thirteen. Need a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Congratulations to Dylan.
Yes, I think that's from all of us. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, congratulations, Mr. Glad. Okay. Need a motion to put this advertisement in the Press Republican, as we must once a week, for the next four weeks, before the election, dealing with the dissolution. Village of Champlain, resolution for the dissolution of the Village of Champlain, whereas the village clerk received a valid petition for the dissolution of the Village of Champlain on December tenth, two thousand twelve, and whereas the next general village election in and for the Village of Champlain will be held on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, from twelve noon to nine PM, at the Village of Champlain office, eleven oh four Route nine, Champlain, New York. And whereas, voting on the resolution for the dissolution of the Village of Champlain will be held on the same day, with the resolution appearing on the election ballot asking, shall the Village of Champlain, New York be dissolved? Now therefore, the said resolution and petition are on file and can be examined between seven thirty AM and four PM, Monday through Friday, at the Village of Champlain office, eleven oh four Main Street, eleven oh four Route nine, Champlain, New York. Dated February eleventh, two thousand thirteen, signed, on either of the notes, clerk treasurer. Have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, finally, purchase of a new water meter. This meter is the one that has been inaccurate for a period of time, that caused some concern. One year we're using twenty million, next year we're using thirty million, next year it has been, it's been up and down. Last year, last year the, I think it was fairly accurate, but this was not, my understanding is this meter was not, when it was installed, was not installed correctly.
Not in the right proximity, right?
In the right proximity, so that the meters was, so it was reading high, the pumps are, pumps four hundred and sixty gallons per minute, and it would read much higher, no, it's four hundred gallons per minute, and it would read at four sixty, about there. Solicited some quotes. One from E.J. Prescott for forty-six hundred bill freight charges. Notice another one, USA Blue Book, for forty-six, forty-nine, ninety-five. And I believe this freight charge is added to that. You notice another one here from PollardWater.com, six inch, size six inch, the length eighteen inches, weight fifty-five point five, probably the same meter as the other two, for five thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. And there's one more here from Instamart, electromagnetic flow sensor for seventy-three ninety-seven. Need a motion to purchase?
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. Okay, why such a huge fluctuation in price? They seem to be all the same.
It was quite disparate, isn't it?
Yeah, so my concern is, am I missing something as to the difference here? Does one include a warranty that's bumping the price so high?
Well, I would think.
They all have that bad rate of the ten-year life.
Well, I would think that they all would have a minimum warranty amount.
Yes, maintenance period up to ten years.
Well, they say maintenance period's not a warranty, right?
And the second one says it's a five-year market lock.
Have you looked at these, Mike, by any chance?
No.
Pass it over. I don't know what you know on these meters, but perhaps you can give us some insight.
Okay, let's, you want to table this for now, and have Mike look at it and give us his insight there?
I think I'd give it a year, because.
It's a huge expense.
We've done a while without it, and needs to get replaced, but it's not gonna hurt to look into this better.
All right, we'll table it. Table the next meeting, have Mike examine it. It'll be his first executive decision.
Why they better do it?
Are you?
Mayor Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
Correspondence number three, I think they were asking for a letter of support on that, for the records management grant, we talked about it in the opposite.
Yes, I remember that one, I think. Do you have a chance to look at number three? Refreshing, I don't know if we've used this frame before.
Yeah, records management, actually, we had one before that we were successful at getting.
Is it the board's pleasure that we write a letter of support for this? Support this program?
Well, we've supported it in the past.
Mm-hmm.
We've used it, too.
I make a motion that we write a letter in support of this.
Okay, have a second?
Second?
Any other discussion? Looks pretty straightforward. Okay, then that shall be done.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the letter will be done. Anything else, please? Done? One here.
Should we act upon the gentleman's request for the combination of the meter, in case it's okay with Mike and there's no stipulations?
Well, we're still two months away from the next reading, aren't we?
Yeah, okay, so it's on that, okay.
We have time to take Mike investigating.
Yeah, I'd rather hear what Mike has to say on that, rather than the guy end up in a pickle, should he choose to.
I think we have a number of those in the community.
Yeah.
There's, there are actually two addresses, right?
Yeah. So the board will have to come to some, some conclusion on how they're gonna address that, for those situations. All right?
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.